I'm gonna send a picture of the cookies to Bill Saums.
Yeah, I gotta tell Bill what it is.
Where's Bill's cookies?
Actually, I did have Bill's cookies.
Do you have they right there?
He forfeits.
I have them in my office.
We want to take a picture and send them to him.
Send Bill the cookies, send a picture.
Big bite taken, I don't want them.
Jobs deep market.
I'll send them one of mine.
It was yours, you lose Bill.
You weren't here, you forfeit your cookie.
Be ready when we are off. It's not seven yet, we're in the official naval observatory in time.
I'm ready when you are.
Be ready when the navy is.
Burning in that last thirty seconds.
Ready? I'd like to call this Ledger Town Council meeting to order, please join me in the presence of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roxanne, would you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Davis?
Here.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Here.
Mrs. Ingalls?
Here.
Mr. Malone?
Here.
Mr. Marshall?
Here.
Mrs. McGrathen?
Here.
Mr. Sebelia?
Here.
Mr. Saums?
Mr. Washington?
Here.
Eight here, one absent.
Thank you. For those that have attended council meetings before, I'm gonna go a little off topic here in the beginning. I'm going to ask Mayor Allen to say a few words, I'm going to ask Rabbi Ekstran, Ekstran, to say a few words, and then I will open it to residents and property owners, and while you're here, I am strictly going to enforce the three minutes. So if you have speeches, you will want to look at them and mark them up before you come up, because I will gavel you. I'm that mean. So, the other thing I'm gonna do to the nice Housing Authority people that are sitting around the room, your agenda item is at the very, quite-
Quite far down.
Quite far down the agenda. I'm gonna move you to the very beginning of the agenda, because I'm afraid we're gonna be here for a very long time, and I don't think you want to be, so I will move your portion of the meeting up. Fireman, I think you're gonna be here for a while. But you have been before, right?
He's all good.
Okay. Mayor Allen?
So thank you, I've prepared an official statement as a result of an action that occurred within the town recently, so I'm gonna read that to you all. On or about February 6th, 2020, a political sign on private property appeared on Gallup Hill Road behind Ledger High School. The sign, hand painted on a scrap of plywood, read "Go Trump" on the first line and "Shif Liar" on the second. At that time, a couple residents expressed their dislike of the sign, where I discussed political free speech rights that are afforded to us as American citizens. On Saturday morning, the sign remained but was now emblazoned with a spray painted gold swastika in the center of the sign. My office received several calls and emails, as well as social media inquiries and media coverage. The Ledger Police Department removed the sign and held the same as evidence. An active investigation is ongoing, and charges against the offender can range from breach of peace and vandalism to a Class E felony, which is intimidation based on bigotry or bias. In conducting due diligence, I have found that the so-called tagging of Trump signs with swastikas is not new, dating back at least to an incident reported on December of 2015 in Redding, California. Since then, similar incidents have occurred in California, Arizona, Ohio, Maryland, Florida, Texas, and Georgia, to name a few. Unfortunately, what appears to be a similar ugly incident has now occurred in Ledger. No other symbol in the world elicits a more negative emotion and fear than the swastika. There is no place for it in town, and no place for its use political or otherwise. Political discourse is a function that allows us, as enlightened citizens, to hear and be heard in a positive way, with the goal of achieving an equally positive outcome. What occurred here today was not political discourse. I denounce the use of such vile, repugnant symbols anywhere in society today. Additionally, I remind everyone to respect the property rights of others, as well as their political opinions, even when those opinions do not align with those of your own. At the end of the day, we must remember, we are all neighbors, friends, and residents of our wonderful community, and we cannot let a small few detract from the many. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Rabbi? Oh, Rabbi, I'm not gonna hold you to three minutes.
Oh, thank you, I will try to, I will try anyway. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you for being here.
Thank you, Ms. Davis, and council members, residents. Thank you for allowing me to speak to you this evening, and as I said, I'm Rabbi Mark Ekstran, and I'm from Temple Emanuel in Waterford. I'm a resident of New London. Some of you may remember me, because I was very honored to be invited to give the invocation at this past year's Memorial Day Parade, and I'm equally honored to be here this evening. Although I'm not a resident of Ledger, I am concerned about happenings in your town. Many of my congregants are your friends and neighbors. I was contacted by some who had become alarmed because of the recent incident of the swastika painted on the sign on Gallup Hill Road. I do not know the intent of the person who painted the swastika. However, I do know very well the effect that this symbol has, and likely, the painter of the symbol knows as well. The swastika is meant to intimidate. For Jews and others, it is a symbol of deep hatred. For us, seeing the swastika immediately calls to mind six million Jews and millions of others murdered systematically by the Nazis. Unfortunately, the kind of hatred that undergirded the Holocaust did not die at the end of World War II. It survives. We can see it in anti-Semitic attacks all over Europe. We also see it in anti-Semitic attacks in the United States. Anti-Semitism is arguably the oldest form of hatred known to humanity. It has survived so long, because it lies quietly beneath the surface, bubbling up here and there until conditions are right. And now, in the United States, it is bubbling up more frequently. Eli Wiesel, Holocaust survivor and author, was asked during one of his presentations at Connecticut College years ago, could the Holocaust happen again? We would all like to think, not here, not in the greatest country in the world, this bastion of democracy. We'd all like for Eli Wiesel to have said "no" to this question, but that's not what he said. He said, "If conditions are right, it could happen again." Anti-Semitism lurks, waiting for political turmoil and economic hardship. So how do we combat it? We combat it by rooting it out everywhere we see it and hear of it. We condemn it and give it no sanctuary. A swastika anywhere should be unconditionally and unequivocally denounced, and I thank you, Mr. Mayor, for your remarks. I think you already know that this type of denunciation is necessary. Most, if not all, of you will be willing to make such a statement yourself, if you've not already done so. But that's not enough. You see, anti-Semitism is learned, and it also learns. It is learned and passed from one person to another, one generation to another. But anti-Semitism itself, it also learns, it responds to conditions. Centuries ago, Jew-hating was purely religious. Then it was economic. Then it was nationalism. Then the Nazis tried to make it scientific. It morphs to fit whatever conditions exist. Just calling anti-Semitism out is not enough. We must educate it out of existence, along with all other kinds of hate, whether they be based upon race, religion, ethnicity, national origin, gender, sexual orientation, or any other human quality. Hate will have no safe harbor in our communities, only if we educate ourselves and our children. It's quite a coincidence that tonight, Ibram X. Kendi, the author of How to Be an Anti-Racist, is speaking at this very moment at the Coast Guard Academy, right across the Thames River. Mr. Kendi asserts, rightly, I believe, that when it comes to hate, there can be no neutral ground. If we are not doing something to actively combat hate and promote love, we are allowing anti-Semitism and other forms of hate to lie below the surface. So what can we do? We can invite Holocaust survivors, or their children, to come speak to your civic groups. Invite speakers about the African-American and Hispanic experience in America to come and do the same. Speak to and educate your children. The mandated curriculums in Connecticut on the Holocaust and genocide, and the African-American studies, they're good, but they're not enough. Children learn social norms primarily from their parents, they learn it primarily in the home, and unless we are willing to actively create a community that rejects hatred in all of its forms, we will never have it. I'm not putting this on your shoulders alone. I'm here to help, and I know that the Jewish Federation of Eastern Connecticut is also here to help. We stand by you, and we are ready to support you. I want to lastly thank you for your time. If you have questions for me later after this meeting, call me, I'm always here for you. I understand that this discussion alone shows your concern for your Jewish friends and neighbors, and I do hope that this council finds it necessary itself to respond to this incident by expressing in unequivocal and unqualified terms that hate, in any of its forms, has no place in our communities. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, I will open it up to resident and property owners for three minute or less comments. Yes?
First, I'd like to thank Mayor Fred for putting out his statement, I do appreciate it. I have a prepared statement that was written prior to any statement being made. Members of the town council, my name is Andrea Goodrich, and I have proudly lived in Ledger for the better part of twenty years. Let me first say, while I'm a supporter of our bipartisan leadership, I am disturbed in 2020 that I am here discussing this issue. I was away for business over the last week, and when I had a free minute to read the local news, I was shocked to see that in our town, there was a homemade sign with the words "Go Trump," "Shif Liar," with a swastika painted on it posted near my children's school. While I hope all parties could engage in respectful politics, I understand that radicals will make signs with messages such as "Shif Liar" or a negative Trump message, but the swastika is unacceptable, and the use of it needs to be condemned publicly and swiftly. I went in search of a statement from our town leadership condemning it, condemning that hate speech, or a statement from the mayor who received my vote, and was shocked not to find one. I did find this statement, when you get into the political season, you know, you will have some sign disruption and whatnot, but there are no hate groups that we are aware of. Make no mistake about this, this statement is false. There are hate groups quietly lurking in every community in America, waiting for their community to allow their message to be heard. Our students and our taxpaying citizens need to know that our leadership is not going to tolerate hate speech, and will protect our Jewish community as well. When we as a community become apathetic to incidents like this and dismiss them as an anomaly, it encourages others to engage in such behavior, and that is unacceptable. We need to be a united front against all anti-Semitism, racism, homophobia, and xenophobia in our community. Martin Niemola's message lives on in us. First, they came for the socialists, and I did not speak out, because I was not a socialist. Then they came for the trade unionists, and I did not speak out, because I was not a trade unionist. Then they came for the Jews, and I did not speak out, because I was not a Jew. Then they came for me, and there was no one left to speak for me. In the climate that we live in, we cannot afford to have your silence on this issue to breed acceptance. I urge you to put out a statement condemning all hate speech, and I thank you for doing so, and to embrace our diversity and prevent any attempt to divide us. You've been elected to speak for all of us, and I ask you to take that responsibility seriously. Thank you.
Thank you. Next. Yes. Yes. Name and address.
Good evening, everyone, my name is Veeby Herden. I'm a resident of Ledger, Connecticut, for thirty-three years now, and I retired for thirty-three years for the state of Connecticut.
And for the record, your address, please.
Sixteen Bill Street Drive, Gales Ferry, Connecticut. I raise my beautiful kids here, one is a major in the Air Force, and one is an Army Ranger, and nothing, we always love this small town. I could leave, but no, because I love the environment here, I love the people, they are all nice, and I am so happy that this day is being addressed. I got no choices to do today. I could go to, you know, like, Coast Guard to attend the anti-racism, but I choose to be here, because I love this town, and I would like to address this nonsense craziness, and I'm glad that we're here, and thank you, Mayor, for addressing this. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good evening, I'm Marty Wood, I live at eleven South Glenwood Road. I'm also the Chair of the Ledger Democratic Town Committee. I'm reaching out to all the members of Ledger, Gales Ferry, particularly our elected officials, to publicly condemn the use of symbols that instill fear in our community. So thanks, Rick, for doing that. This condemnation needs to be more than bipartisan, it needs to be nonpartisan condemnation. There are more than two political parties in Ledger and Gales Ferry. In fact, there are three hundred members of our community that are members of minor parties. There's almost forty-five hundred unaffiliated, so if we look at those numbers, there's more than two parties. Most recently, a swastika was sprayed on a homeowner's sign. This symbol is anti-Semitic, and is used to instill fear in not only members of the Jewish faith, but immigrants, gays, lesbians, underrepresented in marginalized groups. How alarming. Just before the 2018 election, tiki torches, like the ones used by racists and white nationalists on August twentieth in 2017 in Charlottesville, Virginia, were used to support a Trump banner at the intersection of Colonel Ledger Highway and Route 117. Last summer, a rope noose was found hanging from a tree in Highland Lake Park, here in Ledger. This symbol brings to mind the lynchings by the KKK. We must publicly and immediately denounce these acts before the next incident occurs. Hate speech often escalates to harassment, harassment to threats, and threats to physical violence. We are better than that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello to members of the town council, to Mayor Fred, and everyone in attendance. My name is Luke Cludier, of one thirty-six Lambtown Road. I was born of a Cuban man, whose father was a first-generation Cuban immigrant. For the first years of my life, I lived with my mother, my grandmother, and my grandmother's husband, who I refer to as my Papa. Papa was an African-American man. As a child, Papa would tell me stories about how his grandmother was a slave, and how his mother was the first generation in his family to be born free of the chains of slavery. He would tell me about his own experiences as a young man, entering adulthood in the time of segregation. He always talked about the progress we had made as a nation, and his hope for continued progress in my lifetime. In 2017, my parents made the decision to grow our family and adopt a child. The child, who is now my brother, is a beautiful boy of black and Hispanic heritage. He has brought more joy than I can express to my family. However, to be honest, I fear we made a mistake by bringing a boy of color to Ledger. I feel that Ledger has a racism problem. My family recently made an effort to bring this up to one of our town officials. When we expressed our concerns, the town official's response was that we were too sensitive, there was no problem. Since our feelings were not taken seriously, I will state facts. In the summer of 2019, a noose was hung in Ledger, in a Ledger public park, a clear symbol of racism that I would define as a threat. Members of the town leadership and the town police force did not investigate the incident nearly thoroughly enough. Town officials determined the noose was not race-related, and denied help from the NAACP in investigating the issue. Now, this past weekend, a swastika was painted in town near the high school, another clear sign of hate. This means there have now been two public displays of white supremacy, and to my knowledge, no action has been taken. I want to be clear in saying that it is not politically extreme for me to say swastikas and nooses are not acceptable in our town or anywhere. Action should be taken, and those responsible must be held accountable. I'm here tonight to ask two questions. First, will this council and the leadership of this town acknowledge that we have a problem with racism? And if so, what will the leadership of Ledger do to address it? Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Next.
Hi, my name is Alyssa Segal Miles, I live at seven twelve Colonel Ledger Highway. I would like to express my great concern over the painting of a swastika on a sign in our town. This is not the first time that we have seen racist or anti-Semitic symbols in Ledger. As mentioned before, there were the tiki torches and the noose hung in Highland Lake Park. And as you may remember, tiki torches are significant, because they were used by the marchers in Charlottesville who chanted "Jews will not replace us." That is a very powerful symbol. It doesn't matter who put up the swastika, or what motivated them to do so, our response must be the same. This is a nonpartisan issue. We must all stand united and all condemn this symbol of violence, hatred, and bigotry. With the presidential election upon us this year, I am very concerned about the potential for more of these types of incidents, or worse, to impact us here in Ledger. Imagine the impact if we are all united in standing against hate speech and expressions of hate in our community. A strong public statement of condemnation of this instance of hate speech from our town council, from all of the residents, and a lot of community leaders, thank you, Mayor, will show people who would make such hate speech or other acts of hate, that this will not be tolerated in our town. And even perhaps more importantly, it will show people who may be victims of hate, that their community will stand with them against those who would make them feel unwelcome or unsafe. We must stand in solidarity together. I ask that the town council make a very strong public statement of condemnation of the use of the swastika and any hate speech in our town. Thank you.
Next. Anyone else? No one else, okay. Are there, oh, next up would be Tri-Town Trail. Committee, you're prepared to make a report? Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Karen Parkinson, I'm president of the Tri-Town Trail. I brought with me tonight my husband Keith, who's a member of the Tri-Town Trail, and Scott Johnson, who's Parks and Rec, who's going to be one of our friends. The Tri-Town Trail, as you know, we've been actively working, and we perceive ourselves as advocates and catalysts in the development of the Tri-Town Trail, which is from Bluff Point to Preston Park, for people who don't know that are here. And we also see ourselves as a fundraiser to make this trail happen. The reason for tonight's presentation is to give you an update of where we are right now, and what we're doing going forward in 2020, and to ask permission that we can get started on the construction of the trail. We also were asking for Parks and Rec Department to perhaps take us under their tutelage, and so we can have a home within a Ledger department. Scott, what I think we'll be talking about forming the collaborative, or not? We really, really hope that within the Parks and Rec Department, we can form a trail collaborative, inviting all members, agencies, groups that are involved in trail building at the town of Ledger, so we can share our knowledge, our efforts, our fundraising, our concerns, so that everybody isn't doing something the same way, we can share our knowledge. So we're hoping that will happen. We gave you a small handout, not so small maybe, to express what we're doing in 2020. We call this Joe Clark Brook Bridge Project 2020. We've recently applied to the Community Foundation of Eastern Connecticut for a grant to help us with this project. None of the grants have been awarded yet, so we're anxiously waiting for that. The Tri-Town Trail has some fundraising money, we've raised money in the last ten years, and we haven't been able to spend it, because we haven't been able to go forward. We also plan between our grant money, if we receive it, and grant money that we're gonna go after, we'll have a couple fundraisers this year. We expect to use two thousand volunteer hours this year, which will be another dollar amount, estimated about thirty thousand dollars. So we intend to invest a good sixty thousand dollars into the Tri-Town Trail, Phase One. On the second page of the handout I gave you, there's a copy of our, one page out of one of our brochures, and in the upper right-hand corner, you'll see a little map called Phase One. If you go from the parking sign up in the upper right-hand corner, that's the Preston Town Park. And as you proceed to the left, you'll see a little black dot there before it goes straight down, that's where we want to build the bridge, approximately, that's where this Joe Clark Bridge North will be built. My husband will explain some more about the bridge. Then if you see, as the line drops down, that goes across the Ross property, where we've got an easement, and then it goes through the Bowman property, where we have an easement. Took us two-plus years to get those easements in place, and that's why we've had a major delay in going forward. Then it drops down farther, and then- Last fall, after we got the easements, we started making plans to flag the trail. This is not even a deer path up there, so this is right through the raw woods. But we did go through it and flagged it with tape. The last fall, we had a bunch of town officials, Mayor included, and Scott, with Chad Frost, hiked through it. So that's been done, and we got good response about how beautiful it is back in there. So we hope to continue that. But this year, we want to build the Joe Clark Bridge North Bridge, the bridge where...and then up along the Bowman and Ross properties, there's many places up there where there's...we call them riverlets, where it's major gullies, where it's wetlands up there. It's vertical wetlands. So we have to build little foot bridges across like at least seven or eight of those. So we figured that into our 2020 project as well. And if we can accomplish all that and lighting the trails, clear the trails up two to four feet this year, will be doing good. Going forward in 2021, we want to continue the planning for a Joe Clark Brook Bridge South, which is another bridge, major bridge we'll have to build. And then we'll start making plans for the rest of the trail that goes from where this little bit of the bottom goes all the way to 214. That's Phase Two of the northern end. Groton itself is also working on grants and building the trail from Bluff Point up to the Marriott Hotel. So that's in plans at Groton. So we're building both ends of the trail. We'll worry about the middle section when we get through with both of the other ends. We'll worry about going through the Groton utilities at another date. So we have alternatives and plans if that doesn't work out. So we're working diligently on both ends.
Keith Parkinson, 55 Rose Hill Road, Ledyard. Here dare people telling about how long they've lived in town. I know Mary's been around for a couple of years, former neighbors, I think up to the 50-year point now. Yep, no, I got it. On the front of the handout I gave you is the copy of the bridge that we're going to be building at the north end. This is an example of it. It doesn't...it looks rusty, and that's on purpose. We've chosen a forest service plan that instead of modern steel bridge, we're going to use tree stringers, rough-cut wood, both for the planks and for the running boards. It's a heavy-duty unit. It will be a 10-foot-wide bridge to accommodate emergency vehicles that are needed, and also to get equipment up, as Karen was mentioning, on those vertical wetlands and the trail. There's glacial moraine still in there that we have to build around, and it's quite a project, but it's a lot of fun. It's going to be a beautiful asset for the town of Ledyard. Yep. We are going to minimize...first, all the literature we've been reading says, "Do it right the first time." That is so that it will cut the maintenance costs, and it will be around for 100 years from now. And so that's what we're going with. You'll notice that we have replicas of geocells. This is a geotextical map that is water-permeal. Water can flow through it, and inside of it is a geocell, which is a hexagonal plastic device that we fill with stone or dirt that's there. And so that will sit right on top of the ground. We won't be excavating into the ground with this. There are other alternatives that that could be done, but that's expensive, and it would be disturbing the area. This bridge will stay in the woods and look like a part of the woods.
Forty-five feet long?
Yeah, 45-foot-long. The biggest, the hardest thing we're working with are the three stringers here. It's actually going to be five stringers. They're 45-foot-long, 25 inches at the base, 21 inches in diameter at the top. We're looking for that kind of wood that might be available. We've talked to the tree warden for Ledyard, and the response was pro, because he was one of the officials that walked on the trail last fall. It looks like it's going to be difficult finding trees of that size that we can have them cut down, be they need to be down or...
We're still looking though.
That's right. It'll probably be utility poles, I'm of the opinion now, out of Georgia, southern yellow pine, that meets the specs of the forest service on the strength. This bridge is a consumable bridge.
Sacrificial.
Sacrificial, consumable. If there's a thousand-year flood, the bridge will go downstream, we'll have to disassemble it, bring it back, and redo it again. The alternative to that is to build a permanent bridge, steel bridge is what the plans call for. Detracts from the aesthetics of what we're trying to do. We would have to comply with the Army Corps of Engineers if we chose to go that route, and that's too hard and too expensive.
This will build with some contract labor contracts to get these things in, but most of the rest of this stuff will be volunteers.
We'll need contractors for handling 45-foot poles.
I think so.
Professionals. Talked with the tree warden. He's big toothpicks. Gave us a local tree service that would be...that the town issues could be of real value to us. The plans that we're following are U.S. Department of Agricultural Trail plans.
Forestry service. Forestry service.
Forestry service, yes. It's...that's where we are. Do you have any questions?
It's going to happen. We're going to get there. We're going to make it happen.
Good. I know you guys have been working on it all the years.
We've got to get younger volunteers, all of us out there.
What type of equipment do you plan on driving across the bridge?
I'm sorry.
What type of equipment do you plan on driving across the bridge?
Probably a gator or something small. If we required to have an emergency, needed to evacuate someone or something of that type, we could get a small vehicle. That's why it's going to be a 10-foot long.
So under 5,000 pounds?
Oh, yeah, probably. That's not big. The strength on the bridge is specified in the plans. There are 8,000-pound support timbers that we're putting in there. So we could take and have 5,000. That's more than enough for what we need to do.
We'll have a fundraiser this spring, and we'll help you all attend, and we'll give you a walk back to Joe Clark Brook. Everybody says it's wonderful.
Show it to the 10 dollars.
When we get it going, we want you all to come.
Thank you. And we, as always, really commend your committee. You guys do good work.
Have one other request, Mr.. We are going to be building this on town property. We will have to submit a building permit. We would like permission to build on town property with the easements. We have permission for the smaller bridges across the easement properties, but we officially should have something from the town.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Speaking of the tree warden, aka Public Works Director, he was going to speak tonight and give a presentation, and I suggested that we would postpone him to another meeting because we knew this meeting would perhaps go long. And Steve is very passionate about his road, so he can speak at length. So at this time, we have comments of town councillors, and I usually go last, but I am going to go first with your permission. I have a bit of a prepared statement, but not really. It goes without saying that what happened in our town is unacceptable. The mayor's comments certainly speak for the town council, and we also, I believe I can say for the town council, strongly denounce this activity. But I'm going to go in a slightly different direction, as those of you who know me know I often do. I drove by the sign location at least five times and never saw it until the day posted a photo provided by Representative Conley. It was really unfortunate that sharing the photo on Facebook was then used in the newspaper and only gave publicity to someone clearly seeking it. How exactly was that helpful to our community? I really love Ledyard. I've been here 50 years too, Keith, almost 50 years. So I'm really angry, and maybe angry is a hard word, but I'm upset that another one of our state officials thought it necessary to immediately contact Channel 3 News. How exactly was that helpful to our community in this situation? I thought about the best way to move forward and have a real meaningful discussion. Unfortunately, the town legislative body had no opportunity to have a dialogue before the discussion took place on Facebook and in the newspaper. So instead of being deliberate, we find ourselves here tonight expecting to respond, as we must do, and prepare a statement. I think we must do that. I agree with all of your comments, but I'm not going to ask you necessarily to make a comment unless you feel you want to. Until we have that opportunity to discuss, because I know we can work together, but we don't need politicians to get involved. We will do it as neighbors, invite the rabbi if we decide we would like to do that, but let's do that without politicians and move forward as neighbors. Any other comments from town councillors?
Well, I've only lived in Ledyard since 1976. Okay, so I went to Ledyard middle school, I went to Ledyard high school. I got two kids in the school, okay? Unfortunately, as people may not like to hear this, but Ledyard is like a lot of other towns. You're going to have 99...it's like when you look at a bushel of apples, you've got a bunch of great apples in there and a couple of bad ones. And the goal of the town is always, and I'll speak for myself, and I think I can speak for those on the commission, I mean, on the council, you try and root out the bad apples, Seeing somebody, and I'm the type of guy who likes to sit back, I watch, I deliberate, I find, I'll use the word, I find my person I'm looking for, and I attack. I don't open the door, I don't let them know I'm coming. That's why I get people, okay? And I can safely say that I've got a lot of history, okay, relative to my own personal life. So being quiet on a topic does not say that a person condones it, because you have no idea what people are doing in the background, okay? And as far as how you get a problem, because people said, you know, the rabbi was right on the point, these issues start at the home, okay? And you want to fix it, you got to fix it at the home. But the part of that is, you've got to listen to your neighbors. You got to listen closely to your neighbors. You listen to what people say and what people mean, okay? There's what people say, there's what people mean, and that's how you root this stuff out, okay? I have no interest in, and this is, I don't mean this in a bad way, I have no interest in sitting around at a table and doing gumbaya. I like to get results. I like to figure out how do we root something out. I don't have a problem sitting down with a group of people and say, okay, we need to attack it. How's the best way to ferret this out? Because you need to ferret out the problem, okay? Because that's the only going to solve the problem. And if we think we're going to be able to kill it, this has got, as the rabbi was very good about saying, these tentacles run deep, okay? And what you're dealing with, you have people who have, who may be, feel like they don't have anything at stake, they may feel like they're not part of the community. And the best we can hope and do is try and bring them into the fold of the community, but first you got to figure out who they are, because they do this stuff in the dark. And our job is to get them out into the light, okay? Unless we can do that, then we're never going to fix this problem. And this is a long-term problem. This is...this problem is not going to get solved this year. It ain't going to get solved before I probably die. I'll be blunt, because every time you turn around, there's somebody else who's got an issue, and they want to point the finger at somebody and blame somebody who has nothing to do with their issue, okay? But as a community, what we can do is listen, listen to what our kids say, listen to what our kids watch, and pay attention to that stuff, because that's what helps condone it. If you go up to the high school, you listen...I've sat in stores in town, I've sat in stores in Groton, I've sat in New London, the surrounding towns, not to point anybody out, but if you listen to what the kids say, and the parents that don't say anything about it, that's part of our problem, okay? People have to be...people have to hold people accountable. And the best way to do that is first figure out where they are, and I'm not going to say hunt them down, but you got to find them, okay? So until we can figure out who these people are, and they may not even be from this community, okay? And that people may not like the idea of that, but somebody goes to another community. I remember, I love my mom, she passed away many years ago, but she once told me, we lived in a community, not this one, where the crooks lived in town, and they went out of town to steal, okay? And my point being this, you don't know who did this, okay? There's issues in town, there's issues in every town, because there's always going to be pockets, okay? But what we can do is try and listen, pay attention, and then call it out, okay? I don't have any problem calling somebody out that I think has done something. I'll call them out first. It's great if I can prove somebody. Would have been great if we could find somebody walking around with gold paint on their hands, okay, so we could figure out who it was. Because I think we all want that. But the reality is, people are going to hide in the darkness, okay? We got to flush them out of the light. And part of that process is, everybody sitting in this room who lives in the town, everybody who's going to watch this video, is going to listen to what people are saying and figure out which side of this issue they are on. Free speech is a great thing, but you don't need the hate speech. That's it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes?
Yeah, no, I'd just like to agree with Mike. I've agreed, thank you, Mayor, for your comment. Rabbi, well spoken, agreed with everything you said. I had the fortunate, when I was growing up, is the neighbor behind my parents. They were both survivors of Auschwitz. So I learned from them what evil really was. Unfortunately, I have to say, I drove by that sign every day. I didn't even see it. Saturday morning, as was reported in the papers when it happened, I drove by that sign that morning. I didn't see it. I wasn't looking for it. I don't think anybody's been looking for it. It was spotted. Thank God it was spotted, and it is being rooted out, and we're discussing it. It's out in the open. Yes, acknowledging we have a problem is the first issue.
To your point, sir. Okay? Yes, there are people in the world who are biased, there are people in this world who are hatred. We're never going to get rid of them all. The ideal way is to get rid of them all, but we're not going to, because people have their own personal beliefs and opinions that are not necessarily aligned with...all of us in this room right now, we all condone this, as Linda was saying, as the mayor has said, as the rabbi has said. As a community, we've come forward. Everybody in this room is here because of this incident. I think that shows that we stand as a community to condone this abhorrent behavior.
So true.
Any other comments?
I would just add that, you know...
No, not from the public. I'm sorry.
Everything, I agree with everything everybody said here, and the rabbi and the mayor, but I sure hope that we are allocating the adequate resources to actually find these people and bring them to justice for whatever it's worth. If nothing else, just on principle, that we're not ignoring it. We are doing something about it.
One more? Thank you, yes.
I hope you all stick around, because I think what the thing that...one thing that bothers me about this is creating the false notion that this is the stuff of Ledyard. In other words, what I mean is that this is what Ledyard is, that this is our dominant trait, right? So I hope you'll stick around. people and bring them to justice for whatever it's worth. If nothing else, just on principle that we're not ignoring it. We are doing something about it.
One more? Thank you, yes.
I hope you all stick around, because I think what—the thing that—one thing that bothers me about this is creating the false notion that this is the stuff of Ledger. In other words, what I mean is that this is what Ledger is, that this is our dominant trait, right? So I hope you'll stick around, because later on tonight's agenda, we're renewing a lease with the Ledger Congregational Church, which is hosting the town's food pantry, which is serving more households than ever, and has a bigger volunteer base than ever. And I would propose to you that that is what Ledger is about.
Thank you. Any other comments here? Any—oh, yes.
Somebody said, you know, if you hear something, say something. And I think there's a lot to be said for that, because you hear kids or people talking, and you kind of shrug it off. But maybe we should pay more attention to what is being said.
Thank you. Any—oh, yes.
One of the—for lack of a better word—one of the positives that I see coming out of this as the conversation is started—I've had conversations with people about this that I would never—it wouldn't be a subject that we brought up. So maybe that's me being naive, but again, where you say you gotta root it out, you have to find it. It's amazing when you start a conversation is what you find out.
Yep. That's it.
Can you—councilors have any comments on any other—other issues? Yes?
I have the perfect audience here.
Run while you can.
No, I just wanted to talk about the census. Around March 12th, everybody will be getting a letter from the Census Bureau, and we're asking you to please fill it out, email it back, or call. Otherwise, they're gonna—people will be coming out kind of after you. But this—this means money for Ledgers. We need to count every single person, and it also—what was I going to say here? It also affects our representation in Congress. Ten years ago, we lost a representative because our population went down, or maybe it didn't really go down, but, you know, people did not fill out the form. The other thing is, if anybody is looking for a temporary job, the Census Bureau is looking for people. All you have to do is fill out a questionnaire on email, or this next Wednesday, the 19th, at the Bill Library, there'll be an informational session from 2:30 to 3:30 on the census. And from 3:30 to 6:30, there will be somebody there, again, from the Census Bureau, to help you fill out an application if you're interested in a job. And the best part is—I was very surprised—the salary is $23 an hour. That's pretty good for a temporary job.
I want to jump on the back of that. For full disclosure, for those who may not know, I'm an engineer for the state of Connecticut, licensed professional civil engineer. And as you can guess, since I work for the state of Connecticut, and I work in the transportation part of the state of Connecticut, I won't talk about tolls, but this does play into it. When you don't do the census, and you figure out how much money is coming to the state, we get impacted, okay? So that's why it's so important, because the better your numbers are, the more money the feds will give us. So if you know your neighbor says, "I really don't want to do it," think of this: Your neighbor's saying, "He doesn't want to do it, he wants you to pay more in taxes," because either it's going to come out of your pocket, that you're going to give to the town, the state, or the feds, or the feds are going to send some of that money back, because other states are going to do their due diligence, work really hard, get their numbers high. When they look at the population across the U.S., that's how the money falls out. I know, I deal with it in transportation, so when we have great numbers, we'll see great money to help fix our roads. And that's why I'm a big proponent of telling people, "Fill out this census," because it brings money back to the state of Connecticut.
Thank you. At this time, I am going to call for about a five-minute recess, in case some of you would like to leave. You're certainly welcome to stay, but we will take a five-minute recess.
You had an important thing to get to, so I didn't want to interrupt.
At this time, I am going to call for about a five-minute recess, in case some of you would like to leave. You're certainly welcome to stay, but we will take a five-minute recess.
No, nine is the smallest of the grants.
That's it. Yes, that's it. Number nine.
Public hearing date?
Yes. You just did that at the year.
Oh, okay. I see.
Finance.
All right. Oh, my God. I'm sorry.
Okay, I make a motion to set a public hearing date on Wednesday, March 11, 2020, at 6:45 PM, to be held in the council chambers, 741, Colonel Ledgerd Highway, to review and discuss its proposed 2020 application in the amount of up to $1.5 million to the State Department of DOH for funds under the CDBG Small Cities Program for improvements to King's Corner Manor Senior Housing Facility, 60 Kings Highway, Gales Ferry.
Second. The motion's been made and seconded, and if you ladies would come up and just a brief, a brief overview of what the grant is all about.
Absolutely. Good evening, Councilor Mayor. I'm Liz Burdick, I'm the town planner. And we became aware that this grant is becoming, and actually Mary McGranton made me aware of this about a year and a half ago, the background on the Ledgerd Housing Authority and the condition of the structures. When we were looking at writing this grant for this next period, we found that most of the grants that were given out last year were not for housing rehab, which is what we had written our last grant for, for private housing, for public housing. So she, Mary, and the mayor and I talking, and me and Colleen are the new director of the housing authority, we said, you know what? How about senior housing? Let's see if we can get something going. Luckily, Colleen was on board, and she already had a consultant working with them to put together a needs list. So we have obtained a consultant to help us write the application. The grant, the grantee will be the town of Ledgerd and the subrecipient of the money from the state, which is also from HUD, so HUD to the state, to the town, to the Ledgerd Housing Board. And the consultant will help us write the application, he will also administer the grant, make sure all of the work is done in timely manner, all the reports are done and whatnot. The grant is going to be written, we hope, up to 1.5 million. That's what we are eligible to write up to. There is no timeout, so. That's, that's the most important part.
Colleen, did you want to say a few things about what wonderful things this grant is going to do for us, or for you?
It's, it will definitely bring a lot of help to the seniors that are down there. We have 30 units, they're average 420 to about 605 square feet. They're all electric baseboard, windows have only been replaced if they've been broken. And their, their electric bills can go up to about $200 a month for that small little space. So new windows, new doors, mini splits for a better heat efficiency would be wonderful for these people.
Charlie, would you like to add anything? Charlie's the chairman of the commission, of the authority.
Just in addition to what Colleen said, we're also thinking of upgrading bathrooms, getting rid of the bathtubs. Most of the people that live down there, bathtubs are dangerous, if not deadly, so we're going to get, we're going to walk-in showers, enroll in showers for wheelchairs. Based on our conversations with the consultant, apparently the people that give this money, it's for helping the people in the units. They don't want to see pavements, and they don't want to see yard work, in other words. And so we're focused on using every single dime into those units to make those people living conditions much better. That's, that's the goal. And since I got involved, and Colleen's got involved, we got a great maintenance personnel. There's been a big turnaround down in senior housing down there, and I'm glad to say it's for the better. And with Linda's help, four truckloads of food the other day. We're getting significant donations from the commissary on the subbase of food that normally would be thrown out. And so we take a very little bit of housing for those people, and the rest goes up here at the pantry. And I'd like to see that.
It's a nice collaboration between the pantry and housing, and the senior center. We all share, and it's, it's just been really wonderful. You guys have been just absolutely fabulous. Yes, questions here?
Quick question. Having lived here since 76, actually 74, gosh, I'm getting that old. When was the last time they did anything really to the facilities, as far as the interior where the people live in them? When was it, what, was it last 10 years ago, 15 years ago? 40 years ago?
The only significant improvements were roofing and some...
Nothing interior, though?
No. It's all exterior work. They replaced water heaters.
1986, the interior?
Water heaters, stoves, refrigerators, when they break. You know.
Cabinets are...
Kitchen cabinets are original.
Countertops original from like the...
Original.
Wow.
Place gets painted. We just had, we just, we spent two months cleaning one big... We recently passed a new rule, you're not allowed to smoke in any of those units. We had a person that moved out in one unit, took us two months, two months to clean that unit up, to get it where when you walked in, you didn't smell smoke.
Can I add one other thing? Because I have a condo that I rent out, and one of the things I learned from an electrician was on the baseboard heaters, check the, because you talked about split, split duct units. So if you're going to use a baseboard heater, think about an oil-filled one, whoever's going to be looking at that portion of it, instead of, it's a little bit more expensive. But from everything I've learned and been taught, is that the heating costs are much lower, because you're heating the oil versus a piece of copper, just a straight piece of wire and a whole tire.
Questions? With this grant, does that, are there any stipulations to make these units ADA compliant?
That would be the bathrooms.
I can, I can speak to that. There is not. The money can be used for accessibility, but it's not just for ADA clients.
I only ask because I know there's some issues as far as accessing the units for some people, and I know that's outside the walls, but...
We had hoped that we could replace some of the sidewalks, because they're, they're in bad shape, but you know, we can start looking for some other monies for that as well. But apparently, they're not big on site work. They want to do everything to make them accessible and energy efficient.
Kevin?
My only comment is, you're talking about putting ductless units, would that be in place of the base rate, the baseboard heats?
Yeah.
So the main, the electric baseboard heat would go out, go away?
No, they would actually leave them there just as a backup, God forbid they needed it, but then they would, they would put in...
The primary source would be the ductless units. Okay.
I assume that'll be...
They're way more efficient.
Yeah, way more efficient. Right now, they have a hole in their living room where an air conditioner can be put in. Some people do, some people don't, some people have a window unit in a wall through space, so very inefficient.
Will they, sorry to interrupt, but will they, will they fit out every unit?
Yes.
Every housing that they, with AC, so if you do a split unit, it would be airing?
Yeah, we're going to do both, so it would be the air and the heat, and then they would close up those holes.
Well, they'll look at the grant.
I just bought one in my house, so I think they're one of them.
John, and then Tom.
Will you do this as one big project, or break it up into individual?
We want to do it with the least amount of impact to the residents. We don't expect people to move, to leave their units, so it, so we just can't go in there and just have everybody leave and do the whole place. So it'll be done on a, on a unit by unit basis.
As they empty out? As they empty out, or you just...
Oh, no, no, no.
Or just one at a time?
So far, we've been told, all the work we want to do can be done with people in the units. They may lose the bathroom for one day, or, or you know, something like that, but they will not have to move out of a unit. Our turnover, frankly, down here in those 30 units, is very low. If we did it on a turnover basis, people knew it would take us 20 years.
I just want to say also, the grant period is from 2020 to 23. I believe there is an extension, but the, that's why I appreciate you all setting the public hearing for March 11. It's a very time-sensitive grant. This is DOH. This has to be done, everything has to be done perfectly and within a time period, and the grant application is due, I think, first week in April. So we don't have a lot of time, and we can't apply for the grant until you pass the resolution.
Yes, Tom.
So we had a finance committee meeting tonight, and that's where we got this on the agenda. And I did kind of, we were short on time, so I didn't ask a couple of questions I wanted to ask, and one of them is, so basically, if you got the total amount, right, there's no guarantee you'll get the total amount. You can ask for the, up to one point. So let's say you got it, that means that if you, now, what's the square footage on each unit? Are they about all the same?
No, the lowest is a little over 400, and the double unit, the handicap unit, I guess is around 600.
Yes, we have, we have 22 that are 420, they're considered singles. We have three that are handicapped, those are about 608, and then five doubles, which are 520.
So would you do the improvements based on square footage with regard, let's say if something was 420, would that unit be allotted less money than the 520 to be rehabbed? Essentially, interior. I'm just asking the philosophy.
It would be based on, I think we're kind of going for the heating systems, the doors, the windows, the showers, and then kind of go from there. We did have an architect come in, said we think we could do kitchens also. I don't know if that's really truly feasible.
Yeah, I mean, if you're just, the simple math, it's 50, 50 Gs a, a unit.
That's all the Gs.
Yeah. That's not, I mean, when you're talking about bathrooms, kitchens, that price kind of...
At the March 11 hearing, our consultant will be here, and the application will be much further along, so we can give you, you know, a better sense of exactly what work is done, because that work has to be in the grant.
Okay. So you have to propose a plan?
Yeah, it's all, it's DOH and HUD standards, so you have Davis Bacon Wages, minority-based businesses, women-based businesses. It's a, it's very strict in their requirements, but on March 11, our, our consultant will be here, his name is Kent Lewis from the home development team, and actually, he has experience already with the housing authority, because CHAF has, is paying them to help them with the needs assessment. So that's one of the reasons we chose them, was because they already had the experience with the housing authority, and so they could just take it and run with it.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. The, we have a motion on the floor, okay.
We'll do the second public hearing.
Yeah, we're only setting the public hearing, but we kind of, since this was sort of new, wanted to have the background. Okay, so we're ready to vote. Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Yep. Mr. Washington?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingalls?
Yes.
Mr. Malone?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrattan?
Yes.
Mr. Sebelia?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed.
Motion carries. Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Okay, now I'm going to go back, because I skipped it, committee commission and board reports. Nate, thank you for your patience.
My pleasure.
One of the minutes?
No, I have to go back to committee commission and board reports. I skipped that.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
So again, thanks Nate Woody, 770 Long Cove Road, Chair of the Planning and Zoning Commission, and thank you, I know you have a busy agenda tonight, so I'll try to be quick. I have to commend the housing authority and the planning director for the work they've done here. The turnaround that we've seen over the last two years is astounding, and that's a really important source of affordable housing in the town, and that's something the planning commission really cares about, so we're happy to see that. Wanted to point out tomorrow, the planning zoning commission has two public hearings, it'll be 7:00 PM, February 13th. We have a public hearing on the plan of conservation and development, which the council has already seen. This is likely the final chance for the public or anyone else to make comments on our plan, so we welcome you to show up, or to provide us written comments. We also have a public hearing on a potential regulation change for a potential technology park, which would allow us to land technology parks in town. All of the details for that are, of course, on the town website on those public hearings, so if you're curious, please check that out. Second, on your agenda tonight, you have the acceptance of the Eagles Landing Open Space at 79 Vinegar Hill. That's about 100 acres of open space that came from cluster subdivision that we approved earlier in the year. This open space connects to the Great Oak Greenway and protects a monstrous piece of reservoir watershed, and so, you know, this is a really important piece that you guys are going to accept tonight. I'd also like to say that this is the first exercise of the updated cluster regs, where I think we got a cluster development that we actually wanted, and so, you know, a minor pat on the back to the commission for, for following that through. Last comment is, I'm sorry, the Parkinson's left, the presentation on the Tri-Town Trail, that's $30,000 piece of infrastructure being installed on town land, so that means the town is assuming liability and maintenance for that. It also means that should at least be subject to an 824 review by the planning commission. I assume it also needs wetlands permits, so I hope the council moves forward with doing those referrals and making sure they ask the questions about maintenance and liability for all of that. And with that, if there are any questions, I'll answer them, otherwise...
Any questions? No minor pat on the back, we'll give you a major pat.
It is for the commission, not for me. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, now we're going to move on to review and approval of minutes, if somebody would make that motion for both those minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mr. Sebelia?
Yes.
Mr. Washington?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingalls?
Yes.
Mr. Malone?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrattan?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed.
Motion carries. We have several communications which are in the portal, don't believe there were any referrals. Council Subcommittee Liaison Reports, we'll start with admin.
Admin met tonight, there are multiple reappointments on the consent calendar, and also, we voted to approve the STR as is, it's coming back to the council. That's on my report.
Thank you. Any questions?
It's time.
Finance?
Finance met this evening at 6:00, and we already covered the agenda item with the grant for the senior housing, and finance also met last Wednesday, and those other action items are on the agenda for tonight.
Thank you. Lee and Chuse?
Wendy's met last week. We move forward, liquor ordinance, that move forward to admin, everything else that we had is on the agenda for tonight.
Very good. Liaison reports to my left, John?
I attended the building committee meeting two weeks ago, I missed the last one. Still some ongoing punch list items, the biggest one being the broken stair treads. You know, you step off the edge, you break off the nosing, that's the issue. The company's name is American Built Right, and they're out of Canada, so go figure. But ONG is being proactive. They have in their contract, it's called the right to offset, which is, this company is also doing work at another location for ONG, so they're withholding that money as well as this money. They've really got their attention. So we're going to wait for the manufacturer to come up with a plan before you pull the plug in this company and go with somebody else. There's still some balancing issues and excessive noise in the heating system, that's an ongoing issue they're working on. There's still vermiculite coming out of the walls, it's a, vermiculite is a granular insulation, like sand almost. When you build a concrete wall out of blocks, you pour it inside for insulation. Well, because it's so small, it comes out of small cracks that were caused by construction or age. So that's an ongoing issue that I can't believe we're still dealing with, it's a simple fix, still an issue. The trap's going good, the old track is gone, the drainage is being worked on now, and that's my report.
John, I mentioned that I've lived in town almost 50 years now. Has any building project ever not had a problem with the heating system?
Not since I've been on the council.
It's, it's amazing. Every, I remember when we built the building for Parks and Recs at the time, it was Parks and Recs and the Board of Education building, nothing but problems with the heat. I just don't get why that's always a problem. So, anyway, we have problems here with the heat too, didn't we? Yeah. All right.
I just wanted to make a comment on the Gallipill School Project, that extra little barn garage thing that they're building?
Oh, yeah, the bike shed.
The bike shed?
Yeah.
I pointed out to Liz, as well as Nate Woody as well, I don't think they built it from the right location. I don't think it meets the setback requirements. So I think they may have to go for variance.
I'll mention that.
Yeah.
Okay.
I didn't notice it until they actually, they actually built the structure today on top of the foundation, and I drove by it, went, that's not 50 feet from the side, the end of the road, so...
I'm assuming they applied for a building permit?
The building permit was approved.
Oh, okay, they just...
I don't think that's in the right location.
Okay. Stay tuned.
They'll check, they're, they're going to go check, they're going to go measure it.
Any liaison reports on this side?
I have the Board of Ed.
Board of Ed?
Yeah. Board of Ed approved their budget, their budget request is in the amount of $33,189,420, an increase over 2019-2020 of $640,851. It's a 1.97 increase. They will be coming to present their budget to the council in the next few weeks, I believe, and in the meantime, there are FAQs at ledgerd.net.
I think it's important that people understand, because I've seen some chat online about the Board of Ed comparing budgets, and that Ledgerd is a little bit unique in that the healthcare is not included in their budget. So the numbers always need to be explained, because while 1.9 sounds pretty doggone good, that does not include the huge increase in healthcare, simply because we choose to have it on the town side, where most towns, I believe most towns have it on the Board of Ed side. Any other reports, comments? Okay, mayor report.
All right, thank you. I just wanted to add one quick thing. Mr. Claudier had mentioned the new situation down at the Highland Lake Park, and I think one of the comments that he made might not have been completely accurate, so I just wanted this, I followed up on this today with the chief of police as well, and I'll just give you the summary here, but officers Browning, McKinney responded, seized the rope as evidence, and notified the state's attorney's office and surrounding agencies, as well as the Connecticut Intelligence Center, the FBI Joint Terrorism Task Force, and the Joint Terrorism Task Force of the incident. Chief Rich went on to meet with Representative Conley to update her on the matter, as per her request, and also notified the New London chapter of the NAACP of the investigation and of the report. The investigation was suspended when efforts yielded no additional lead. So I just wanted to make sure, because I think he had identified that we kind of dead-ended it, and I would say that, no, I think a lot of effort was put into that. But I'm not done with that stuff yet, because I wanted to share a couple of things, in this process of educating myself, I wanted to share with you. So this right here, this is, this is protected, this is not hate speech, this is considered art, and what you'll see here is the 45, which is, happens to be the president, the 45th president of the United States, which is Donald Trump, but they've cleverly used a swastika for that. Here was a Trump pent sign also with a swastika in somebody's yard. This one is a giant billboard that was posted outside of Phoenix, Arizona, and you can see what's on there with nuclear bombs going off in the background with Donald Trump. That was protected under free speech. This one was a homeowner's yard sign in Olmsted Township of Ohio. Two was a Trump sign with a red swastika on it, and I have plenty more, but I'm going to stop it with this one. This is, this one is in Cape Coral, Florida. So this gentleman too had a Trump sign in his yard, and he woke up the next day to have a giant swastika painted on his garage door. So there are definitely, I mean, I have a lot of stuff here that I can pass through, but it's offensive, and I think part of the problem that we're seeing is that people are choosing to use something like a swastika as a means to convey maybe their own hatred or whatever the case may be, but I think it's a terrible idea to use probably the single most hated symbol in the world, that if you look anywhere at any types of symbols, nothing elicits a more painful response than to see a swastika and understand what it means, and maybe that's part of it, is people not understanding what it means. But I wanted to leave it at that, so thank you for that. I also had a parent call about this, and she was concerned, she didn't want to drive by the sign with her children in the car, and I don't know the age of her children, but I guess I would look at it as an opportunity that depending on the age of the child or children, instead of avoidance, that could have been an opportunity to have a conversation about what that symbol means, and maybe that helps to, to Counselor Washington's comments, maybe that helps have that conversation, might be uncomfortable, but it needs to happen. I also wanted to echo the concerns of Counselor Marshall regarding the school punch list. The list is over 400 items. We are well down the road with these schools. As you know, we have the HVAC problems, we have some issues with concrete at the Gallipill School. I have fielded several... Marshall regarding the school punch list. The list is over 400 items. We are well down the road with these schools. As you know, we have the HVAC problems, we have some issues with concrete at the Gallup Hill School. I have fielded several complaints from people on Town Farm Road about the lighting in the parking lots being on 24/7. So I wasn't comfortable with that either, so I contacted the Board of Ed. And that too is a punch list item, that there was some sort of automated lighting control system that's in place that is not working, and has not been working from day one. So what is required at Gallup Hill School is that somebody has to trip the breaker every single day at some point in the night to turn it off, or, you know, that's why they're on all night long, because somebody is then turning them off when they come in the morning. I think it's time we bring the hammer with the contractor, no pun intended, but I think it's time. I attended Eagle Scout Award for Mark Rieger. Ledgerd is plush with Eagle Scouts and they keep coming, so I keep attending. And it's good to get to go to those events and it's an honor and it's great to see all these kids coming through the ranks. And I think it's, 4% of all scouts end up as Eagle Scouts, so they're in a kind of an elite group. We had a municipal CEO meeting regarding short-term rentals, you'll hear more about that, but area towns got together to kind of find out what people are doing, and they are aware that Ledgerd has moved an ordinance down the road a bit, so they wanted to hear more about that. So I shared with them our draft copy and we had a conversation about that. And there's a lot of pros and cons about them. In New London's case, they have seen a number of homes that were somewhat derelict houses that have been purchased and renovated completely and used as short-term rentals, so they have reason to believe that it's a plus for them too. Still completing the budget work, we spent better part of today working on that. There are certainly some challenges in that budget, but I am very confident that we are going to have that number pared down dramatically by the time it comes to the Finance Committee and by the time I deliver it to the council on March 2nd. Events Magazine deadline is coming up, that is February 18th. I know, Linda, you have gotten something in already?
For the council.
Yep, which is fantastic. The responses from the residents on that have been excellent so far, understanding it's only our first issue, but been very good. A lot of committees and commissions want to be in there. We're trying to add more space as we can to allow all the committees and commissions a piece. We just need additional advertisers to allow us to get more pages, which will allow us to get more content. I met with the Regional Director of the 2020 Census on February 4th. As Counselor McGrattan alluded to, their jobs are available $23 plus an hour, which is really great. Ledgerd is creating a committee for the survey itself. The impact on Ledgerd, the last census, one out of every five Ledgerd residents was not counted. So 20% of our population. So imagine if your budget at home was based on the census and somebody said to you, "Sorry, 20% of your budget just got taken off the table." That's what can happen to not just Ledgerd, but the state of Connecticut. So it's really important. If you don't do it online, or on the phone, or via mail, they will visit your house as many as 12 times. So they are persistent and they will get to you, so just do it one of the first three ways and then you won't even have a knock on the door.
Because she's paying us, huh?
So April 1st, incidentally, is Census Day. So be ready to do it. So many people have the ability to do it online.
Stay.
I know, it happens to be April Fool's Day, but it is in fact Census Day.
That was a bad...
That's not a joke.
That was not a smart move.
No.
Because the letters are coming out on the 12th of March.
Yep, March, right, exactly.
You can respond before April 1st. It's just that April 1st is the cutoff. So they have to draw a line in the sand somewhere because of babies being born. So babies that are born March 30th would count in this census. If your baby's born on April 2nd, they would not.
Right. And it's very important, because if you think about an eight-year-old not being counted, the next time that child is counted, that child is 18 years old and has probably already been completely through our school system and was never accounted for in town.
And five, children under five are most undercounted on the census.
And there's nothing sensitive, there's no kind of sensitive data that is collected from this, so people don't need to worry about that. We've also scheduled an Economic Development Summit meeting with what they used to call CERC. You probably remember the acronym, CERC, Connecticut Economic Resource Center. The governor has changed that name, it is now Advanced CT. But they are doing a presentation for us, a presentation and a workshop, to kind of say, what does Ledgerd want to be from an economic standpoint. The study is paid for by Eversource, so it's paid for by you, thank you very much. And we do hope that the entire town council will attend, land use and planning commissions will attend, representatives and senators that are in our district would attend. So a formal invitation will be going out on that, but that is March 19th, 5:30 to 7:30. Just a quick thank you to LICEF, attended LICEF today, as did Counselor McGrattan. They awarded three grants today. They've done incredible work for people, for residents of the town of Ledgerd. And my assistant provided the news to one of them today, and the woman was just hysterical in a very good way. So I think it kind of made her day and that's really good to hear. And then the last item for you is, the survey of police departments in the country was just completed for the 2018 statistics. And Ledgerd ranked 19th in the state of Connecticut after Wilton, so pretty prestigious Fairfield County towns, we're doing all right. And we were 122nd out of 1,246 towns of similar population as our own out of the state. So essentially, we were in the top 10% of the country.
Which is down between...
Yeah, thank you.
Safest community. So they look at the five, basically five most heinous crimes, but that does include things like, well, includes things like robbery, rape, murder, pretty horrible things. But it doesn't include, like Baltimore, Maryland, let's say, wouldn't be comparable to us. So we're not compared to them, we are compared to places like Norwich, New London, so something that's 10,000 people or larger, but not a true large city. So that was a positive thing to see. I always like the finishies with the things that we've dealt with, it's always nice to finish on a more positive note.
I've observed that, Mayor.
Oh, you've picked up, thank you. That's all I have for you tonight.
Anybody have any questions for the Mayor? Yes.
Hey, I heard a report that with the track and field project at the high school, that the contractor was actually trucking with the dirt out of town?
Shouldn't be. There were about 1,700 cubic yards of topsoil that came off that field, and it should all be going to Public Works. At the transfer station, they were stockpiling it all there with the understanding that they'd need about 500 cubic yards of that back. They initially were going to truck it all out of town, and then they made this arrangement, because we had wanted some for the town green, so they had made the arrangement to say, "Bring it up there." It cuts down substantially on your trucking.
I heard reports that when the trucks were coming up to the stop, it's like they were taking the left and heading down 117.
Okay, so the only thing I could think of in that case is if they were reloading, because they've also been back hauling gravel.
Yeah, I knew they were bringing gravel.
So you saw...
Somebody, then this is somebody who said to me that they were coming from the school with a load of dirt and they were taking the left of the line.
Okay.
Instead of right.
I'm not aware of all of that. I know that a substantial amount of it is at the transfer station, but I couldn't account for all the trucks for sure.
Okay.
Okay, any more questions? Hearing none. Your time is coming, time is coming. We have no old business. Would anybody like to amend the agenda under new business? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve, well, first of all, would anybody like to remove anything from the consent agenda? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar.
So moved.
Seconded. Motion's made and seconded. Roxanne, would you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingalls?
Yes.
Mr. Malone?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrattan?
Yes.
Mr. Sebelia?
Yes.
Mr. Washington?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed?
Motion carries, lots of good people there. Finance.
I make a motion to appropriate $138,510 to account number 210-701-01-5820, BOE CNR reserve account, upon receipt of the final FY 2020 ASD grant payment for items outlined in the Board of Education Fiscal Year 2020 Comprehensive List for Agroscience Program. In addition, approve the transfer of $138,510 from general fund account number 101-882-210-59300, transferred funds to CNR account 201-1402-49002, transfers in upon receipt of the final FY 2020 ASD grant payment.
Second. Okay, discussion. Discussion.
They've already approved this, as you know, because of the newspaper. So originally, what the board had asked for was to spend the money in advance before we received the final ASD payment. After further discussion and looking at what the formal or even informal policy of the town is, that is not something that we would do or should do just based on our history with state funding. So they won't be getting that money until we get the final ASD grant.
Any questions? And, you know, it gets to my whole process conversation again. The Board of Ed probably, well, they shouldn't have approved this until they brought it to the council first. So it's always about...
And they did recognize that was a mistake.
Oh, okay.
They just, well, you know, you're right, we didn't kind of...
Okay, so you've covered that for me.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, I didn't cover it for you. They just, Bill Salms, Counselor Salms, and the Superintendent and Chair of BOE Finance had a discussion offline.
Very good. Okay, any questions? Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingalls?
Yes.
Mr. Malone?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrattan?
Yes.
Mr. Sebelia?
Abstain.
Mr. Washington?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Seven in favor, one abstention?
Motion carries, next item.
I move that we authorize the town to offer the current R11 for sale with reserve. In addition, authorize the use of the proceeds from the sale of R11 and up to $555,000 from account number 210-2040-54325 to purchase a replacement engine.
Did somebody second, okay, discussion?
Who seconded?
Okay, Mayor.
So this engine, we have discussed this engine before. I'm going to read you the background information. And Steve Holyfield is the new AES director, they split the role. And I'm going to invite Steve and John Mann to clarify the technical details, because I don't completely understand them all. And I'm not going to talk to you about repairing an engine. You'll be sorry if I do. But I am going to read you the background information. This has been a complicated issue for a good year and a half. So in January of 2019, R11 had a major engine failure that took almost a year to resolve with the manufacturer.
Okay, that's right.
The failure is part of a known issue with the Navistar Maxforce engine. However, the manufacturer paid only a portion of the repair cost. Customer service provided by international Navistar was substandard. The lack of communication by the company resulted in unacceptable delays in repair completion. During the year-long repair, research of the engine problem uncovered information that the Navistar engine installed in R11 has a chronic history of failures due to the configuration of the EGR components to meet the latest EPA standards. In order to meet the EPA standards, this particular engine runs at an unusually high temperature rate. That high engine temperature rate causes premature failure of multiple engine components in the long term. Research shows an approximate 80% failure rate of these components. I'm going to move on. So basically where we're at is, we have a decision to make to either try to sell the engine and get a different engine, or attempt to refit the engine, refit the rig with a new engine. Steve Holyfield is new to the role, he was able to look at the issue with a fresh set of eyes. And frankly, neither option is fabulous, but Plan A is to try to sell it. And if we don't meet a particular reserve, then we go to Plan B, which is refit the rig. Did I explain it okay?
More or less, yeah.
I'm going to speak before you.
I could elaborate a little more.
I'll elaborate a little bit. So the reason I didn't move or second this motion is because I'm not supporting it, I'll just say that right out. We have been, I know more about fire engines than I ever wanted to know, even as an eight-year-old kid and wanted to be a fireman. And why do I know that? Because we've had two engines over the last year that have spent more time in garages than they've spent on the road, so much so that we had to go out and buy a used engine to probably meet NFPA requirements to have enough water in town to bring to a fire. So after many discussions and tribulations and issues going with Steve's predecessor, Chief Mann, we now have, how many fire engines in the town, Steve? How many engines?
Currently, five that are capable.
You're counting the latter, right?
Only four of them are in service.
Right, right. So we have four, we have four. And we spent, we went out and bought a used engine that is not really recommended on the NFPA guidelines, is it?
It's an older engine.
It's more than 20 years old.
It's a stock unit.
That is the NFPA guideline. So NFPA is natural fire protection. So that's kind of the guidelines we use to, how many hoses, how many, depending on your size. So I know a little bit about that, I'm not a fireman, I don't pretend to be. But I know a lot more than I want to right now. So we have three engines that are working fine, one that is in reserve. Is that correct?
No, we have four engines that are working fine currently, because we picked up that next purchase of the green one that you all have seen.
Right, and that's in reserve.
And we have this one, R11, which came back from being fixed and it hasn't been placed back in service yet.
So it's in reserve, but it's operational?
It could be, it needs a couple more things and it could be operational within a period of time.
And we think we can get between $200,000 and $230,000 if we sell it as-is?
We do.
That's the number I've heard thrown around. Is that true?
We haven't had a fair appraisal on it, that's actually why we're making this.
Yeah, we had a, a broker gave a number of between $200,000 and $230,000.
Do we think that's a realistic number? I'm not, if you don't know, just say you don't.
Given the motor that's in it?
Yeah.
Yes.
So we're probably going to get closer to $200,000 than $230,000. So 200, so now we have $200,000, let's say we get to $200,000, conservative value, and you're asking for another 500, up to $550,000 from your SIP account, correct?
Correct.
To go out and buy a new motor, or new engine, rather. And we haven't specced anything out, we haven't, because you're waiting to move on the motion, so you know how much money you can spend.
We're doing a lot of this behind the scenes work, there's a lot of work that the chiefs from Ledgerd Fire have done to start to work on the spec process. They haven't dove into it to the point where that's the only option. There's still the other options that are available that I've outlined in my recommendations. But they have work on it and they do have a direction they would go with the separation.
Well, with that said, I would say at your pleasure. Sell me your idea, or sell us your idea. These guys don't have any other questions, I think.
Actually, based upon the discussion that I've just heard, we think we have, we think we can get for the truck, you're not sure. We think we have an idea if we're going to buy a new truck, what it's going to be, we don't know yet. I'm going to say we table this motion until you do have an idea.
Actually, we do have a...
When you bring it to me in writing.
But here's what we can't do, Kevin, we cannot disclose a reserve, because that just blows everything.
No.
That is a negotiation.
I want a plan. I understand, I know what you're saying, Fred, okay? But the problem
I can tell you right now, we've, we've had this discussion with finance as well.
I, the rest of the council doesn't know.
We can talk about it right now.
No, I'm not ready to talk about it right now.
I have, I have to agree with, with the counselor. Forget about what happens with the motor. Because we know we got something, a vehicle that we have a question on the motor. No, no question. So the real question is, do you take the motor out, forget about, the Subaru motor is garbage. Question is, do you take the motor out and do you buy, buy a new fire truck? That should be easy enough to put on a piece of paper handed because that's separate of the issue.
It's in my recommendations from the agenda packet. Would you like me to share that with you or?
Yes.
I'm welcome. So when I took over about six weeks ago as A E S, I did a lot of research back through all the information that my predecessor, Ross Adat, there were writing conversations.
Can I just apologize? I was a little overbearing before.
Appreciate it, thank you.
I want to apologize.
He's only been on the job six weeks.
You know what?
I didn't know it was going to be a real window of honor.
You know, I shoved you pretty hard.
And I really hope, I hear your concerns and I 100% hear your concerns. And part of the reason I can't tell you definitively is because I haven't been given approval to even go market this thing yet. So if I don't have the approval to, yes, we may sell it with the reserve-
So, so, so part of me is a little less concerned of what we think we can get to the truck. I understand that part. But the part of me that is more concerned about is what do we think we want to go buy?
That's-
And I can get to, I can get to that as well. So what I do is I, I had to go through a whole host of emails. It's taken me almost two weeks to get through all the emails and learn the track record on this. I've had several meetings with Chief Mann and his officers corps. I did a lot of research, which you guys, I know you've done it, Councilman Malone as well, is in terms of some of the Googling stuff. And anytime you Google Navistar Maxforce engines, you all of a sudden get a bunch of lawsuits to the point where you would actually mention Boston when we had our finance meeting. And I spoke with Craven Associates who, Craven Associates, I have this bio and stuff. It's about six pages long. It killed some trees in printing it out. He's pretty much the expert. He's been involved in every one of the 47 lawsuits in dealing with this motor. And he informed me that the city of Boston, which had 14 of these, I don't want to call them engines because when you talk firefighter, these engine means some, let's water it. This motor that's been installed in this fire engine, there's been 14 of these in the city of Boston. And what happened was when Boston started developing these problems, they were in a K M E fire truck. They just used the same motor. They pulled him immediately off the line. They filed a lawsuit. There was also in the wake of a double line of duty death that happened in 2014 and that's all over the media as well. So that's a very surgible thing. And they waged a lawsuit versus the parent company, which was International. And those apparatus, they actually stuck them off to the side in the garage and they went and they bought all the new Emergency One apparatus right off the bat. And then at some point down the road, when everything panned out, they actually did repower it with Cummings Motors and they were able to keep them only in reserve status. They're not frontline fire trucks. So Boston has a large fleet, as you and I had talked. They never saw duty in terms of being that assigned piece to that firehouse. They kept them in reserve. It was a motor pool thing. If another truck broke down, they put them in service for a week or two while Boston's fleet maintenance dealt with it and all that. So anyway, coming back full, full score on this, our first action that I evaluated was no action. What happens if we place the apparatus in service? We monitor it for performance. If it blows up, we go ahead and fix it and it goes from there. Our rough numbers on what we had paid, and Chief, correct me if I'm wrong, I have my packet right in front of me. It was somewhere in the area of $35,000 between the motor repair, the parts that were covered because we did get some in-kind donation kind of parts from International. The purchase of R 12 because at one point we didn't have a fire engine put in Ledger, so we actually took the one from Gales, one of the engines from Gales Ferry and shipped it up here for a period of time because we didn't have fire apparatus. Things were broken down, things have been in accidents and we had to make the best of it. So that's that non-NFPA required engine that you were talking about is that was a stopgap measure so that we had something for our firefighters to be able to get in and go service the cause. And that's what that was. We don't know how long that's going to last. It's a, what year?
Ninety-two.
Ninety-two, so it's an old fire truck. It could last another three, four, five, six years. It could last till tomorrow and they might go in and find something catastrophic with it. I don't know. Again, I'm not a mechanic. I haven't looked at the apparatus in terms of mechanical stuff and I'm not going to offer my opinion on that. My concern as A E S is some of the impacts to the budgets and I mentioned to that. If we're talking a $30,000 repair at some point down the road or $20,000 repair for this motor, it's a six-year-old truck. It's already had issues. They did not do a full teardown of it. So there could be underlying issues. And one of the things Councilman Salms was concerned about was anything that's below the point that they had dealt with. In other words, there's been contamination of oil and coolant in this motor. We don't know how things look under the head, the bearings, et cetera. So we could be sitting on a ticking time bomb with that. We don't know. We haven't, don't delve into it. Unfortunately, that also costs a lot of money. In my opinion, I think this could happen up to two more times in the, in the lifespan of the vehicle. Right? We tried to keep our fire trucks for 20 years. It's already been six. We've had an issue. Who knows? To your point, you mentioned New London when we were talking in finance. I do know New London had two of these motors and you are correct that they did fix them and they are on the road two years later and they're fine. They're also in dump trucks. Dump trucks and fire trucks are two completely different beasts. When a call goes off, we get in a fire truck, it doesn't come up to operating temperature. We go handle the call under, you know, different conditions than a dump truck that Public Works starts up, runs, it gets properly lubricated, it runs for six, eight, 10 hours in a day or it's plowing snow for 24 hours and then they shut it off. So the fire truck stuff is a lot more severe service than the actual dump truck stuff are in terms of the, the, you know, the lack of lubrication of the motor and how hard that they operate on that. Another option was to retrofit the motor with what they call an S C R technology, selective catalytic reduction. What happened with Navistar back in 2011, 12, there was a major EPA change. That EPA change, most of the places wound up going with what they call the D E F solution. I don't know if anybody's familiar with D E F, but it's urea-based diesel exhaust. We have it on the ladder truck, actually, that was purchased at Gales Ferry. It's just simply, it's urea that's injected through the system. It does some stuff in terms of cleaning up the emissions control. International didn't want to do that. They engineered this whole thing with the oil cooler, the E G R cooler. They learned several years later, 2014, 15, with this whole series of lawsuits and failures that that technology doesn't really work. So that's one option we have is to go and retrofit the vehicle with the diesel exhaust fluid stuff. I personally called a couple of international dealers. I said, "Have you done it?" And they said, "No." I said, "Would you be interested in doing it?" And they said, "We'd actually charge you to even give you a quote because there's so much engineering in this. We don't want to get involved with that." I said, "Okay, fair enough. That's probably not a good option." Next was repower with a Cummins motor. Not a bad option at all. Probably in the between $65,000 and $100,000 range depending on what we need for the motor, the engineering, the addition of different catalytic components. So that remains to be seen, but that's a rough guesstimate based on what I've read for a lot of the other agencies that have done this. And then my final, which is where we're at, was to sell or replace the apparatus. And I mentioned here in my report that Ledger's tanker was taken out of service in 2016 for a variety of different reasons. It was largely unserviceable. We were doing some fleet reduction and we recognized, and actually Chief Mann approached me and he said, "Hey, with the thousand gallons of water that's in R 11 currently, that gives us about five minutes of flow time when we have somebody in a building on a hose line." And for the areas that aren't hydrant protected, he's not real comfortable with that. Their next closest water supply is typically coming from Gales Ferry with the tanker. We all know the difference between Ledger and Gales Ferry. It's about an eight-minute, nine-minute response time difference. So if we had something just the other side of Ledger Firehouse and there were no hydrants, that's how long they're waiting on. So we're actually going to have some delays in our ability to express fire based on the amount of water. He initially said, "I'm looking at something maybe if we're going to do this, 2,000, 2,500 gallons of water." That effectively doubles, if not two and a half times, the amount of water that he can carry. So now we're up in that 10 to 15-minute range where if we have bad roads, that could be 15 minutes, could be very potential coming from Gales Ferry up the hill. I mean, we've all driven up by Gulart and stuff and we know how the hills are. We've had issues in town before with the roadways. Certainly no reflection on Public Works or the state, but let's face it, we live in New England and sometimes things happen, maybe a tree across the road or, you know, anything like that.
Ice.
Ice especially, yep. So that was Chief Mann's proposal was he wanted to replace R 11 with an engine tanker configuration. That's what we call the cross between the engine and the tanker. It's kind of a hybrid. It's not the 3,000 gallon elliptical that Gales Ferry has. It's a paired back version of that. His current guesstimate, you know, he's been kind of playing with the numbers on the 700,000, which there's a vehicle replacement schedule that I believe I added in the packet. I have copies of that if anybody wants to see that in print because I know it's difficult on the, on the iPads and all that stuff. So I can give that to you if you guys would like. Another issue, and so this is where Counselor Ingalls said this is multifaceted. And, and here's kind of your answer on this. We're not just fixing the engine problem. We're fixing a couple of maybe purchasing issues that we've been trying to fix for a couple of years. And to the point with when they sold R 12, there was a purchasing issue there. This purchasing issue that's had the compressed air foam system on it, it was built in the 2010, 11, 12 era of being the latest, greatest thing in firefighting. Some agencies went with it. They had great, great luck with it. It's a Class A foam, so it's used for burning buildings and it's used to try to do things with limited water. It hasn't really worked for this town very well, admittedly. So that's another facet that we're trying to fix. And then my personal thought was as I'm looking around at some of the numbers, I think in the vehicle replacement schedule, we can do this without any major tweaks. We shifted a couple of apparatus back and forth on the replacement times. I think it's doable financially and I've already had a conversation with the chief as I know the mayor has that, you know, this is a apparatus that the town needs, not the town wants. And so it needs to be designed as such with no whistles and bells and frills on it so that it's a very functional apparatus that's going to last us 20 years going forward to meet our needs. Let's face it, there's not a lot of, I think it was 35% of town has hydrants. Is that a number you had? So 35% of the town is hydrant protected and so the remaining 65, I think I did that off my head real quick, is not hydrant protected. And that's a concern. You know, certainly if we can't get water out of the hydrants, then we need to bring the water with us. And we have that ability on the Gales Ferry side. We don't have much of that ability on the Ledger side. So those are kind of my points on where we were going with this. We've already had some good conversations about their vision for the apparatus. I think they're right in line with that. I know that Chief Sacon's in agreement with it as well as Chief Mann. I actually was a little bit involved with it prior to my role as A E S, being a member at Gales Ferry. So I've been privy to some of the conversations, but I think that's what we need to do and I think that's why my suggestion is here.
So let me, let me roll back my comment. My comment isn't that I think that the plan isn't the right plan. My, my, my issue is that we're going to sit here and whatever we get for the truck, we get for the truck. And then we're going to take this amount of money and say, "Go buy a truck." And I think you guys have in your mind what you want, but we don't know what that's going to cost. And is that the right number? That's, that's where I'm going.
Oh, that's absolutely right.
Okay, so is that, is that what we think we're going to get for the truck plus the 550? Is that going to be the right number?
Yes, absolutely.
That's my feeling.
And I was trying-
Because I have nothing in the packet that tells me that that's the right number for replacing the vehicle.
So what we did on that is we specced out a truck with just about everything we need on it to be able to do it. And then went around to different manufacturers-
That's what we're playing with.
-got the prices and base it off of that.
And that's just a placeholder to kind of make sure that all the rest of this doesn't get thrown off for the plan.
Yeah, definitely, that's the money. But I'm just saying, okay. But when you actually go say, "Hey, fire truck guy, you sell me-"
We talked to, what, four different manufacturers, got their base numbers on the idea that we want. And then we-
That's the number that I don't see.
Unfortunately, the town works on a low bid system, so-
No, 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 no.
Unfortunately.
No, what I'm saying is we can't go to them and say, "Give us a, give us a price for these bad brass." We can go to them and say, "We need, you know, give us a good guesstimate based on these specs." So we've gone to three or four different manufacturers, we've sat down, we've narrowed down our spec and we've-
So that's, that's the numbers I want to see.
And that's, that's admittedly something that we've done with every apparatus. We work with a vendor, we design it.
No, no, you're missing my point is that you've gone to the vendors and said, "Hey, I want a truck that does X, Y, and Z." And they've given you a guesstimate of what we think it's going to cost.
Yep. But if they tell you that in a council meeting, it's public knowledge, when they come and bid it, they'll know what the bid prices are.
In the interest of you having a bid.
That's okay, whatever.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
What happens if it doesn't hit the reserve? Are we back here looking for more money? Because we're a year later.
We go to Plan B.
And this is the conversation we've had is that if it doesn't meet whatever our reserve is, and I was trying to not let any information out on a public meeting as far as what we thought we were going to get.
Yep.
Because I don't want to cut our negotiating power underneath us, right? And that's the conversation the mayor and I had and we had it with finance. If this doesn't sell for whatever that number is that we already have agreed is our ballpark, this doesn't happen. The rig doesn't get sold. We go to the next thing. The next thing may be after we talk and, and, you know, discuss it a little bit more, it may be, hey, we'll have rig in service and if the motor fails and we have these issues, then you know what? We're going to yank it out, we're going to put a Cummins in there. And that's the time where we're going to have to go back to the well, which is that, that apparatus replacement. And if it's 65,000, great. If it's 100,000, it is what it is. That's the decision that we're going to make. But I think we would be, I, I think, and again, we're trying to solve more than just the motor issue here. We're trying to solve a lot of things and right the ship, so to speak, on some of the purchases that have been done.
So-
Now would be a good time to do that rather than-
So that's what's missing from the motion is that there's a Plan B.
Okay, so I'm trying to count noses here, but I will let the finance people decide whether they want to have this tabled or we want to count because I'm, I'm trying, I'm counting noses and there is a potential this is going to fail.
I, well, when I look at this, because in addition they authorized the use of proceeds from the sale up to $550,000, if they go 550,001, they're out. Because they only, they're only asking for 550,000. That's what, that's what this is telling, this is telling me. You're going to, you're going to get, you're hoping to get so much for the motor, right? And then on top of whatever you get for the motor, you're going to get, you're going to spend another $550,000.
That was, that was the plan, is $550,000 from the reserve plus whatever the proceeds are. That's why that lower, that floor would be on our marketing. Now, also to add, we have a couple ways that we can go. One is to broker this. So in other words, it would be like, we would call a company like, and this isn't just, there's companies in Connecticut that do this, like New England Fire Affairs is one of them. I'm not saying we're going to use them. They'll probably get a phone call and get the possibility of, you know, entertaining an idea. We can have them broker it, which means they market it, and they put it on websites, and they try to find a buyer for this rig, and get us the most money, and they take their little cut. Another option is, and I had a meeting two weeks ago, I think, with Specialty Vehicles Incorporated out of Massachusetts, who is the Ferreira area representative, and they feel like they have egg on their face out of this apparatus. And they took photos of it, and they're trying to do their own assessment on what they think it's worth, with the idea that maybe they might be able to do something on an invoice to say, "Okay, you want this rig. It's going to be this much through the bid. Now, we're going to knock off X amount of dollars off of that and make, make this whole." So that's really why we're here, is we're trying to get the approval to go start maybe marketing this and feeling the water. Certainly, we're not going to sell this fire truck if somebody offers us $10,000. That's no secret. I'm not getting it any the way. It's not going anywhere.
I think, I think what I'm taking out of this still, from this motion, is that it's really about being able to $550,000. But if you, if you need, I'm going to throw a number out there, crazy number, $2 million. If you don't sell that motor for enough to cover that gap, then you're, you gotta come back anyway.
If we were looking at a $1.1 million apparatus, and I said $550,000 out of here, that means we better get our, what's that, $650,000 or whatever it is, or, you know, out of that, or $550,000 out of the sale.
Okay, we ready to vote, folks? Okay, Roxanne, would you...
Of the, the motion.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. I thought you were going to table.
No, I'm going to just hope for the best. Roxanne, would you call the roll, please?
Okay. Mrs. Ingalls?
Yes.
Mr. Malone?
No.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrattan?
Yes.
Mr. Sebelia?
Yes.
Mr. Washington?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Okay, so we have seven in favor and one not in favor.
Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, I am going to move item number 14 with your permission up, because I asked Mr. France to be here. If you remember, at the last meeting, we gave the representatives 30 minutes to discuss, and this was part of the discussion. And unfortunately, Mr. France never got a word in, so...
He did not. He wasn't.
And so I just wanted to make sure he was here in case anybody had a question, because we, we voted this down. Now, this raises an interesting question. Did we vote this motion down, or did we never vote on it?
Never voted on it, I don't think.
We were all over the place. That was the one that there were.
I think we voted it down, but I could look it up.
Because we can't just bring it back up. Sorry for thinking about this just at this second.
We, we did vote it down.
We did. We, we voted against this.
Just go look at something.
There were a couple, like, I remember, I abstained. There were two abstentions. There were...
I voted against it.
I voted against it.
Yes.
Okay, so now, we have to see how the vote went, because don't we then, oh, Mr. France, I'm so glad you're here, because you'll know what. How do we bring it back up?
Well, since you moved past the ability to amend the agenda, what's, what's the agenda?
Just vote to adopt the resolution.
Resolution and supportive.
Just because you voted it down the first time, it's still a vote to approve a resolution.
And it's substantially changed.
Yeah, so maybe, well, it doesn't matter what it's, it could be the same. You could vote every meeting on a resolution. It's a new motion.
Okay, that's what I need clarification on.
You could vote every meeting, down, 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 and finally you go, "Okay, I'm worn out. I don't want to vote no more." Yes. Nothing's changed in the, in the light bill.
Okay, I thought that if a motion was voted down, and in order to put it back on the agenda, a certain amount of people had to vote.
It's a new, it's a new...
It's a new motion.
It was considered before. In fact, you're bringing forward a different bill.
Oh, that's true. It is a different bill.
But if you're going back, you can put reconsideration as a new motion. Just because you voted it down in previous meetings, you could bring it back.
Roxanne, we're set. Sorry about that. Mayor, part of the reason we voted it down is the mayor wasn't particularly thrilled about it. You're good with this now, correct?
Yeah, so there were, there were, there were some key pieces of this legislation that didn't seem to make any, what I felt were necessary changes. As you know, I was, I was very outspoken about the Pequot Fund, how that formulation was made, and how my feeling was, we've never been recognized as a host community. Not a host community of a gaming enterprise, but a host community of the reservation itself. And that comes at a cost, which includes the education of the children. And I'm not opposed to educating them by any means. I just felt like we were not being reasonably compensated out of the Pequot Fund. So this newest draft that was presented now includes an additional $750,000 to the town of Ledgerd. And equally, if not more important, it includes 100% funding, pilot funding for reservation lands by the state. So Representative France, I know, has read this bill in its entirety. I called him and asked him some questions about, there was somewhere in there where they would add $7 million from the new East Windsor facility to the pot, and then it was, it was kind of a line out and a change to $9 million. So my feeling was, was that just an arbitrary change? And Representative France said, "No, it was not an arbitrary change. It was actually an error. When they first made the bill, it was supposed to be nine." So that made me feel better. The other portion of that was that I said, "Who's to say they ever meet a number of like $9 million? And how, how conservative is that number?" And the representative was comfortable that it is, in fact, a conservative number. So, because the way it reads is, unless and until that fund hits $9 million, there are no distributions. So my fear was, it never hits $9 million. They put some arbitrary number on it and say, "Well, you're going to get $750,000. But if there's nothing in the pot, you're getting 100% of nothing." So that does not appear to be the case. And then the other equally important one was, let me scroll down to the lines. If you get to look at that 39-page draft, it's lines 1085 to 1090, which specifically talks about the changes to the CGS statutes, revising them, and replacing the language for lines 1123 to 1126, which includes 100% of the property taxes that would have been paid on any land designated within the 1983 settlement boundary and taken into trust by the Thorough Government for the Mashentucket Pequot Tribal Nation on or after June 8, 1999. So those changes were substantial, and those changes were something that I felt makes Ledgerd closer to whole.
Representative France, any comments?
So to be clear, on the East Windsor facility, what happened was, originally, there were 10 towns that were getting $750,000 each, which was a $7.5 million dollar price. So before it came to the floor for vote, they added two more towns, but they didn't, they neglected to increase the $7.5 to $9 million. And so that's the reason it went for $7.5. And as far as that threshold, that threshold affects that revenue stream only. It does not affect the other revenue streams that are there. So the now 12 towns that are receiving $750,000 each comes directly from the revenue from the East Windsor facility. The other things that are in this new bill, which relate to the new $750,000 line item, comes from the increased amount of Pequot money that's going to the towns. So historically, when the first, we talked about this before, but the first year that the Pequot Fund was in effect, it had $110 million in revenue, and $88 million went to the towns, so 80%. Over time, the legislature has reduced that number down to this current year, about $270 million coming from the gaming interests, and only $50 million approximately is going to the towns. So what Senator Austin has put into this bill, has come forward, is to raise the number from about $50 million to about $140 million, which is the highest dollar amount that has ever been provided to the towns. And that, in that additional roughly $90 million is where the $750,000 comes, as well as changing the valuation of tribal land from either 25% to 45% of value to 100% of value for the town of Ledgerd. So that's the background on it, and what is being tried to be attempted in this bill. And where that revenue comes from, as I said, is basically taking it out of what is now going to the general fund, and that comes out of the new gaming. The estimate of the new gaming is more than this additional money that is being brought forward. That's by about 10%. And those estimates, based on how we break by two tribes, that is a conservative estimate at the low end of what they believe that will drive from the new gaming interest.
Any questions for Representative France?
Seems like we're in a better place.
Yeah, and no 18-year-olds gambling.
Correct. They did take that out.
Yeah.
What about the, the drinking hours? Wasn't that what they were supposed to...
That is still...
That's not...
I'm still amazed that the other towns signed that so quickly.
I won't know, I don't know whether they read it or not.
I have to, so they've signed it so quick. How could they have written, read it?
And to clarify, something that the senator said when she was here last time, she didn't talk to the chief of police in, not because there isn't a chief of police, no, actually, mayor is the chief of police in my bill, talked to Lieutenant Pinnell, who was lieutenant of, at the police force that retired. That's who she talked with to give her assessment of the, no impact on the town to do that. But I will say that that is only based on what the tribes have said, how they implement that, which is their intention that they have stated is to tie it to a key card at their establishment. So if somebody is drinking, they will be a resident of the hotel, which is there, not be getting on the road before 4:00 in the morning. That is their intent, but it is not a statute. So, and I would say it's not appropriate to put that in statute. It is a regulatory function.
Okay, neglected to kind of follow Roberts' rules here. I realize we did not put the motion. I don't believe the motion was ever made. Did, you have that in your notes?
No, it was moved, and it failed. It was too...
No, no, no. Don't talk about this motion.
Oh, no, the motion's on there.
No, no.
Did we make it?
The motion is on the floor.
Thank you.
I make a motion with Dr. Resilience...
That's because I was looking for the minutes.
I make a motion with Dr. Propose Resilience in support of the Connecticut Job and Revenue Act as contained in the draft dated February 10, 2020.
Second, there's motions made. Seconded, I'm not going to ask for any discussion unless somebody really wants to say something, but I think we had it prematurely. Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mr. Malone?
Aye.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrattan?
Yes.
Mr. Sebelia?
Yes.
Mr. Washington?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingalls?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed.
Motion carries. Thank you, Representative France. I wish it really was not item number 14, but now we are moving back to eight.
I make a motion, authorize the mayor to sign a service lease agreement between the town of Ledgerd and the Ledgerd Congregational Church to operate the municipality's food pantry as contained in the draft dated January 23, 2020, in accordance with Chapter 3, Section 4 of the Town Charter.
Second. Motion's made and seconded. Things are going well.
Well, yeah.
Doesn't seem to be any reason to change plans, so with that...
Nothing but good news. They're expanding, though. And I don't want to belabor this way. They're, they're looking to get some expanded stores. That's the good news.
Yes. Roxanne, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrattan?
Yes.
Mr. Sebelia?
Yes.
Mr. Washington?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingalls?
Yes.
Mr. Malone?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed.
Motion carries. Next item is number 10.
I make a motion to accept road widening strips of land along Long Cole Road dedicated to the town of Ledgerd as part of the Flatbuck subdivision, as approved by the Ledgerd Planning and Zoning Commission on 11/9/2017, and more, being more particularly shown on a certain map or plan entitled Plan Showing Flatbuck Subdivision Property of Green Falls Associates LLC, 1066 Long Cole Road, Ledgerd, Connecticut, July 2017, revised December 13, 2017, per conditions of approval, Sheet 2 of 6.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Kevin?
Standard, standard operations, building the road and granting the towns right away.
Okay. Any questions? Roxanne, would you call the roll, please?
Mrs. McGrattan?
Yes.
Mr. Sebelia?
Yes.
Mr. Washington?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingalls?
Yes.
Mr. Malone?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed.
Motion carries. Next item.
I make a motion to accept road widening strips of land along Vinegar Hill Road dedicated to the town of Ledgerd as part of Eagles Landing Open Subspace Division, subdivision, as approved by the Ledgerd Planning and Zoning Commission on February 14, 2019, and being more particularly shown and designated as open space on certain maps or plans entitled Plan Showing Eagles Landing Open Space Subdivision Property of Mr. G1 LLC, 79 Vinegar Hill Road, Ledgerd, Connecticut, July 2018, Sheets 1 through 15A, revised to December 28, 2019.
Second.
Okay, did we swap those, or are they just wrong on mine?
They might have got moved around on the thing.
Okay, because, okay, mine are opposite, but that's okay.
Yeah, it probably got moved around.
Roxanne, would you call the, oh, any questions? Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mr. Sebelia?
Yes.
Mr. Washington?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingalls?
Yes.
Mr. Malone?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrattan?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed.
Motion carries. Next item.
Motion to accept 102.25 acres and 179 square feet of open space land dedicated to the town at 79 Vinegar Hill Road as part of the Eagles Landing Open Space Subdivision, as approved by the Ledgerd Planning and Zoning Commission on February 14, 2019, and being more particularly shown and designated as open space on certain maps or plans entitled Plan Showing Eagles Landing Open Space Subdivision Property of Mr. G1 LLC, 79 Vinegar Hill Road, Ledgerd, Connecticut, July 2018, Sheets 3 of 15, revised to December 28, 2019.
Second.
So this is, as Mr. Woody made earlier, this is the, from the sub-division, that they're approved, granting the open space. This is a really good part for us to have.
This is a good one.
This is, this is, this is a good one. This is well worth. This is not swamp land. This has got some good trails and something like that.
What's the 180 square feet?
I have no idea. I don't...
I was just going to ask that question.
I know.
Bill Som's tree stand.
Yeah. It's the next one.
Any questions, comments? Roxanne, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Washington?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingalls?
Yes.
Mr. Malone?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrattan?
Yes.